The June 14th, 2018, meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. All members present except Eric. Eric is out tonight. Are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. You have before you the minutes from the April 26th, 2018, our last meeting. Do we have any corrections, or additions, or deletions to those?
No, sir.
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the April 26th, 2018 Planning Commission Minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Rich, that we approve the Planning Commission Minutes from April 26th. Signify by yes.
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 Okay, good. All right, we will move on to Item 7A. And that is a public hearing. Item Z18-010, Pine Lane and Parker Road Properties zoning. And we will turn it over. We will begin the public hearing at 7:02, and we will turn it over to Stacy.
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission members. So this proposal is to zone 15.5 acres, consisting of eight lots. The properties are to be zoned modified commercial, which will continue to allow the commercial uses already existing on the property. The property has been posted, and public notice requirements have been satisfied. So the subject properties are located on the northwest and the southeast corners of Pine Lane and Parker Road. Currently, the properties are zoned B business and C commercial within unincorporated Douglas County, which allows for a variety of uses. The applicants, including the Community Development Department, have submitted this zoning application in connection with a request for annexation of the subject properties. The town's municipal code requires a zoning application at the time of annexation, which is what brings us here this evening. The town, in coordination with the property owners, have worked together to develop a modified commercial zoning that will continue the commercial corridor along Parker Road. The proposed zoning will support new and existing businesses by allowing for the existing uses, and providing assurance that similar commercial uses will be drawn to this development. These properties are considered enclaves located within unincorporated Douglas County, but surrounded by the town of Parker. The town has been working for several years to clean up the town's boundary and annex these enclave areas. In 2016, town staff approached these property owners and businesses for annexation into the town. Over time, town staff and the landowners worked together, and seven of the eight landowners have now submitted petitions for annexation. The one outstanding property owner who did not submit a petition is highlighted in green on your screen. So this annexation is now being processed as a majority annexation. The landowners that have applied for annexation comprise more than 50% of the landowners of the real property described in the annexation petition. The town has contemplated the annexation and ultimate incorporation of this area of unincorporated Douglas County into the town of Parker since 2002. The property is located within the Central Commercial District of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. The Central Commercial District focuses on core retail, services, offices, lodging, restaurants, entertainment, and to a lesser extent, higher-density residential uses. The proposed zoning is consistent with the master plan. Staff has reviewed the proposal and determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability, and the project satisfies the nine criteria required in the Land Development Ordinance to zone the property. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to town council that they approve the Pine Lane and Parker Road properties zoning. This concludes the staff report. We do not have any applicants here this evening, but I am here to answer any questions you may have, and that is it.
Questions for Stacy?
Stacy, what is the...why is the one property owner...why do they not want the annexation?
So, we started reaching out to the property owners in 2016, and we're going to process this annexation as an enclave, so almost like a forcible annexation. We had several community meetings, open houses, and reached out. We could not get ahold of this property owner. The property owner attended the first open house that we had back in 2016. And then from there, we had one this year, and we've sent certified mailings and those sort of things, and we could never get ahold of them.
So it's not that they're opposed, they just didn't show?
Correct.
Okay.
I noticed that the safety discussion talked about changing the name of Pine Lane west of Parker to Silverado.
Right.
And what I was curious about is, there is already a Silverado. It's like, you know, we use Pine all the time, and now we're going to use Silverado all the time?
Right, and so I don't know if you're going to be able to see this. Let me see if I can grab something. So there is a road. Let me see if I can highlight this. That's located right here. Is that working? No.
Your mouse isn't working.
Nothing's...oh, you can kind of see that yellow line that I just drew?
Mm-hmm.
And the northwest corner, kind of over there, got a little bit brighter. So that's an existing road. It's called County Road 4. It was developed back in Douglas County. So right now, it is called Pine Lane Street.
Okay.
So it's lane and street, which is highly confusing to our emergency responders. And so there is a hotel that's being proposed, and is actually under construction up there, and they're using access off that road. And so when we started reviewing the hotel, it came to light that that Pine Lane Street doesn't work. And so with work through the property owners up there, Douglas County, and South Metro Fire, it was determined that the road name change is going to be Silverado Street.
But connecting with Silverado Drive?
Correct. Yeah, so Douglas County does all of our street names, and you can have up to three street names with the same name, different suffixes, but they have to touch. It is very confusing, but yes, that is one of the issues.
Further questions?
One more quick question. So, none of the uses permitted by right are changing, it's just we're going to annex this in?
Right, so what we did is, we looked at the existing zoning within Douglas County, those uses that are currently on the site, and then the town's commercial zoning standards, and then modified our commercial zoning standards to make sure that all the uses existing on site will still be considered legal uses permitted by right. So that's why it's modified.
Is that where that list comes from, under C, under Exhibit B?
Correct.
Because we have that, that, kind of an odd list
Yes.
of uses, that are uses by right.
Correct.
And I just, I was curious as to where that list came from.
So what it did is, we took our existing commercial zoning guidelines, put those all in there, and then we added some uses, or took uses from the use by special review and moved them up. One of those is going to be your motorized vehicles and equipment sales, because Harley-Davidson is located in that area, and they do have motorcycle sales. So that was a use permitted by special review. We moved that up to a use permitted by right.
Okay.
Further questions?
Any new businesses that come into the area would then be under the new guidelines?
Correct.
What about if an existing business sells their business? Does that then still, does the use by special review follow that, or do they have to come up and meet current standards?
So any of the existing uses, or things out there, are going to be brought into the town as legal nonconforming. So they're going to be brought in as is. If something was legal nonconforming, there is a sign on the property, and they wanted to change that, they would have to conform to today's standards, or, and work with us to make sure it meets code. So any changes over time after we annex it and zone it would then have to meet town code.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, as this is a public hearing, we will open the hearing to public comment. If you have a comment about this particular item before us tonight, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Do we need further information from staff on this item?
No, sir.
No, sir.
No.
We will close the public hearing at 7:10. Planning Commission discussion?
This appears to be a very straightforward zoning, and it does meet the nine criteria. I think it's also eventually, in the long term, going to become a complement to the town of Parker, and will help us eventually to create some new revenues, and so I'm in favor of it.
As am I.
I agree with John. I think, and I think it's nice that the owners that did respond came in and did it voluntarily, rather than having to do it as a forced annexation. I commend the staff for working with the owners to do that.
And I think the annexation will be a good benefit to the town for revenue down the road, and I am for it.
Yeah, I support this change. I like that north side, the way it sits against some property that's being developed in the town already. I think this keeps it consistent with the way it is developing, so I like it.
I appreciate you pulling up some of the other uses by special review and to make this conform. I see no reason why it's not going to work, so I'm for it.
I'm certainly in support of it as well. I think, you know, given the current, you know, tax concerns of the town and the budget, to get some more revenue-producing property is important, so I'm all for it as well. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend town council approve the zoning.
I see.
It was moved by John, seconded by Eliana, that Planning Commission recommend town council approve the zoning. Signify your approval by yes.
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 Well, thank you. Now we will move to Item 7B. And 7B is a public hearing on S U B 17-057, The Trails of Crowfoot, Preliminary Plan Amendment Number 1. We will open the public hearing at 7:12. Let's see, Stacy again?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission members. So this is The Trails of Crowfoot, Preliminary Plan Amendment Number 1. This is an application for a preliminary plan to allow for 136 residential units in 68 duplex buildings on 27.185 acres within the Hess Ranch Plan Development. So a little bit of background on this property. In 2003, this property was annexed into the town, and it was part of the Sunmark Plan Development. In 2007, the Sunmark Plan Development became part of the Anthology Plan Development. Then, in 2015, the Anthology Plan Development was broken into two sections, and the southern section became the Hess Ranch Plan Development. In 2017, an amendment to the Hess Ranch Plan Development was completed and approved to adjust the internal planning area boundaries within just the Trails of Crowfoot Development as a result of a realignment of North Pineary Parkway through the site. Also in 2017, town council approved the Trails of Crowfoot Sketch Plan for 890 residential units on 400.2 acres, and a preliminary plan to create 753 single-family detached lots and 35 tracts, which included a school site, a site for a future fire station, open space, and parks on 406 acres. So the sketch plan that was approved in 2017 allowed for a total of 890 residential units within 14 planning areas. And that's what it looked like. Within that sketch plan, there was 136 residential units in paired homes within planning areas 35, 36, and 43. These areas are zoned to mixed use under the Hess Ranch Plan Development. Those areas are highlighted in green and part of tonight's application. So the preliminary plan tonight is to allow 136 residential units in those three planning areas. These planning areas are located at the intersection of Bayou Gulch Road and North Pineary Parkway. A comprehensive roadway network was established within the original preliminary plan for the property. The proposed duplex lots will utilize this roadway network for access. In addition, internal access will be provided to each duplex development through a series of private roads and alleys. The original preliminary plan for the Trails of Crowfoot dedicated the required open space, the required schools, and even a fire station lot as required by the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance and the Hess Ranch Annexation Agreement. That's all kind of shown on this map here. With the addition of 136 duplex lots, there's additional park space required. The 136 lots requires a park dedication of 3.25 acres. 1.53 acres of park space is being transferred from the original preliminary plan, which results in additional 1.72 acres of park space needed. The applicant is proposing to locate pocket parks within all three sections of proposed duplex development with a total of 2.372 acres. The existing and proposed park space exceeds the amount of park space required for the development. So staff has reviewed the proposal and determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. All of the utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. So therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that town council approve the Trails of Crowfoot Preliminary Plan Amendment Number 1, subject to the four conditions contained within the staff report. This concludes the staff presentation. We do have an applicant here tonight with a presentation, but I'm open to any questions you may have.
Questions for Stacy?
Stacy, I don't know if this is for you or the applicant. Are these duplexes on the alley loads going to be with garages or with exterior parking?
So, the duplexes are going to be alley load. So the alleys will have the garages located on them. And there will be parking along the street. So a couple of the planning areas...let me find one. You can see in the top right corner, that subdivision, so there is an internal area that's going to have off-street parking spaces there, surrounded with a park. And the other two planning areas, they have designed the private roads to accommodate parking on both sides of the road, so that you would have that additional guest parking if needed.
Stacy, there's...in the upper left and upper right, there's two sets of these duplexes that appear to be...the sides are facing the main road, North Pineary Parkway. And I'm concerned that that's not going to look good. It's going to look like, you know, like this wall, this wall, rather than homes.
Right, and so what we had tried to do with this development is to make all of the alleys face internal to the site, so the homes faced out. So they face out either onto Bayou Gulch Road or North Pineary Parkway. In some instances, due to easements, due to slope of the site, or just other elements going on internally, we had to get the sides. So none of the rears face the major roads, but we did want to enforce that the sides or the front faces it. For those instances where there's sides, we are asking the applicant to help increase the architecture or wrap those so that they are prettier than just the side of a building.
Will there be utility connections and things like that on those facing the roadway, or will those be on the other side? Do you know?
I don't know that answer.
Okay.
Perhaps the applicant does.
Yeah, we can ask the applicant.
Okay.
Stacy, have all the requirements been met?
All the requirements have been satisfied.
I had a question on three of the letter of responses. What is the...can you explain to me the school district's letter? Because it confused me when I read it.
Right, so at the time, so when we negotiate the school district, the land cash-in lieu or land dedication requirement, as well as the mitigation fee, that is all negotiated at the time of annexation. And so when this Trails of Crowfoot or the Hess Ranch Plan Development and annexation agreement were negotiated, the school district asked for a certain amount of land to be dedicated, which the applicant agreed to. Over time, the school district would like more land, and they would like a mitigation fee, which was not negotiated into the annexation agreement. So we could only, as a town, require them to give us what was negotiated into the annexation agreement. Anything in addition to that, they could talk to the applicant about, but it's not something we can enforce.
Okay. Then the Parker Water and Sanitation said that there were some things that were missing. Is that because it's considered a preliminary plat?
Correct.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
And last but not least, how has the I R E A letter been addressed?
So the applicant had a meeting with I R E A last week, and they sat down to just look at the easements, the size of the easements, the location of the easements, and have addressed all their comments. So everything is good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything additional? And Stacy said the applicant has a presentation?
Yes.
Would the applicant please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. John Prestwich with PCS Group, land planning landscape architectural firm. Our address is 200 Kalamazoo Street, Denver, Colorado, 80223. You know, we're really excited about being involved in the Trails at Crowfoot community, and Stacy sure did a very thorough job, so I'll try and keep my presentation relatively brief. It's always funny that we have to point at her to advance the slides, but I appreciate it. So this...whoops, you went one too many, though.
Sorry.
This slide highlights all of the consultants that have been working together to develop a thoughtful plan that we think responds to the site, the adjacent properties, and a plan that makes economic sense, satisfies all of the technical requirements for the project. And this team does have a tremendous amount of experience creating communities throughout Colorado, and I'll show you that on the next slide. So the ownership group consists of several individuals with, you know, a ton of experience creating communities up and down the front range of Colorado. And on this slide, there's a couple images from one of their more recent projects. It's called Light and Rock in Arvada, and it was recognized as the ninth fastest-selling master plan community in the United States, and was the only community in Colorado to make the top 25. So Stacy kind of went through a lot of the sort of history of the property. You know, it was annexed and zoned in 2003, and then in November of last year, PD amendment, sketch plan, and preliminary plan were approved for the Trails at Crowfoot community, and this proposal is consistent with those previous project approvals. So basically, tonight, we're requesting approval for an amendment to the preliminary plan. The amendment involves three planning areas containing about 27 acres with 68 duplex homes, and the preliminary plan provides the detail required to ensure that the technical requirements can be met. In this case, the proposed duplex homes are consistent with the PD requirements for the community, and really provides a diversity of home type for the Trails community. The proposed layout and land use is supported by the Town of Parker 2035 Master Plan, and finally, about 33% of the site, or nine out of the 27 acres, will be landscaped exceeding the code requirements. So this slide shows the overall approved conceptual master plan with Crowfoot Valley Road on the west side, and the primary entry for the community will come from Crowfoot Valley Road and Bayou Gulch, with an additional access point further to the south along North Pineary Parkway. I think if you hit the thing, it'll get...yeah, there we go. Planning areas 35, 36, and 43 are highlighted on the slide to depict their location within the overall Trails of Community, Crowfoot Community. In general, again, these are adjacent to North Pineary Parkway and the Bayou Gulch intersection. And I thought, you know, it was important to show proximity of these areas to some of the parks that have already been planned and designed within the Trails community. I think if you hit it one more time. The exhibit highlights the pocket parks that are already planned, and the neighborhood park that's already planned in the community. And then these circles represent a four-to-five-minute walking radius. So you can see that these locations are well-served by the current parks, in addition to the smaller parks that we're providing in those areas. And then again, while not part of this preliminary plan amendment, I thought it was an important project background to take a quick look at the neighborhood park. I mean, we're very excited about the work we've done with the Town of Parker's Parks Department, and I think we've really created something that's going to be special for this community. The park includes baseball, multi-use field, a playground area, shade structures, picnic areas, tennis courts. The tennis courts can be striped for pickleball. There's a full basketball court, pool, clubhouse, crusher finds, and concrete trails, and a nine-hole disc golf course. And Planning Area 36, which you can see highlighted there, will actually have homes that will front and are adjacent to this park. Again, I won't spend a lot of time on this. I'll move through it pretty quickly, but this is a view looking across the multipurpose field play area. The baseball field can be seen at the top left, and, you know, tennis courts, basketball, pool, all in the right side of the slide. And then a view looking from the southeast. Again, it shows, you know, how the park is stepped from the lower to the higher terrain. And again, I've highlighted the location of Planning Area 36 in the upper right corner. So we're excited about this opportunity to add some quality duplex homes to the Trails community. These images are from some different communities in the metropolitan area, the Meadows, Stapleton, and Copperleaf. We think the homes have a strong front porch with garages being, again, at the rear of the house, and it really enhances the streetscape, minimizes the driveway interruptions along the sidewalks. And these homes have been very well-received in similar master planned communities, and again, we're excited that these homes are going to be a part of the Trails community. So we've prepared some enlargements of the specific planning areas. This is Planning Area 35. North Pineary Parkway is on the south side of the enlargement, and Bayou Gulch is on the east side. And this planning area includes 25 paired homes. The plan also includes turf areas, a play area with a climbing boulder, benches, walks, trash receptacles, and picnic tables. And then this is Planning Area 36. Again, North Pineary Parkway is on the south side of the enlargement, and in this case, Bayou Gulch is on the west side. The homes are generally set back about 100 feet from Bayou Gulch Road on both sides. This planning area includes 22 paired homes. And again, the design includes turf areas, benches, walks, trash receptacles, picnic table, and again, the proximity to the neighborhood park. And again, the paired homes will have fronts with porches looking towards the park, providing a high-quality streetscape, again, without those driveway interruptions. And this is an enlargement of Planning Area 43. In this case, North Pineary is on the north side of the enlargement, Bayou Gulch is on the east side. And this planning area includes 21 paired homes. Again, similar design features, turf areas, benches, walks, trash receptacles. And in this case, this planning area is actually in very close proximity to two pocket parks, one on the west and one to the south, both within a few minutes' walk of this planning area. So a couple highlights of our proposal. Again, the amendment is consistent with current project approvals, and adds an additional housing option for the Trails community. The proposal is consistent with the Town of Parker 2035 Master Plan, and meets or exceeds the requirements of the zoning. And finally, the Town of Parker professional planning and engineering staff has evaluated the proposal and determined that it complies with the Hess Ranch PD, as well as the landscape standards in the Landscape Development Ordinance. Not going to really go through this, but the criteria for a preliminary plan, I think we've kind of highlighted that throughout. And really, the last slide just really concludes our presentation. Obviously, we're here for any questions, and thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Maintenance of the park will be provided through all HOA, or will the town be supportive of the maintenance of the park?
Which, the neighborhood park?
The big park, yeah.
So the neighborhood park, with the exception of the pool area, will be eligible for town maintenance. We will be dedicating, building that and dedicating it to the town.
And the pool area will be HOA?
HOA, correct.
Okay. And then all the pocket parks will be HOA?
HOA, yep.
Do you have any answers for me on that south end of the planning area 35 and 36?
Where the homes are in a more courtyard configuration?
Yeah, where you've got the sides of the homes actually fronting onto the main road going past them.
Right, and again, those homes are set back, I think it's about 70 feet from the road, so you have quite a good visual buffer there. We actually had done that in some various iterations, where the fronts of the houses now actually have a little bit more park space in front of them rather than facing the road. But I do think that we could work with our builder to look at architectural enhancements on the sides of those homes. Actually, when you're coming up North Pineary Parkway, you know, arguably, you'll be seeing the fronts, so I think that could be a benefit as well.
Okay. Okay.
Further questions?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Further questions for Stacy?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. If you have a comment on this particular item before us, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Do we need any further information from staff or the applicant?
No, sir.
All right. Then we will close the public hearing at 7:30. Planning Commission discussion.
My concerns had related to the comment letters, and those have all been addressed to my satisfaction. I'm excited to see housing coming into Parker that's going to be a little more affordable for folks, and I think that this is great, that this is going to be the first phase of the development, and I support it.
I do as well.
I agree with Ruth. I think it's a nice, clean development. It's a good start to the entire area. We'll fill in, and I'm happy to see the park area coming in use for the entire town. I'll support it.
And I agree that I'd like to see the duplexes come in, that we need more of in Parker for more affordable housing, so I'll be supporting it.
I think it looks like a really nice project and fits into the master plan of this community, so I'm in.
And certainly, I concur with my fellow commissioners that this is, it looks like a good project for our town. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Trails at Crowfoot Preliminary Plan Amendment Number One, subject to the conditions contained in staff's report.
I'll second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Rich, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Trails at Crowfoot Preliminary Plan Amendment Number One, subject to the conditions contained in the staff's report. All in favor, state yes.
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 All right. Next item, Item 7C, Corporate Park at Stonegate rezoning. We will open the public hearing at 7:32. Stacy?
You're stuck with me again, so thank you. So the intent of this rezoning is rezone approximately 13.2 acres from modified light industrial to the Corporate Park at Stonegate Plan Development. The property has been posted, and all public notice requirements have been satisfied. There we go. So the property is located north of E-470, south of Parker House Road, and in between Chambers and Jordan Road. A little bit of background on this site, the site was annexed and zoned into the Town of Parker in October of 2015. Then, in February of 2016, a site plan was approved for the property. The site plan allowed the construction of an extension of Parker House Road. This extension provided an additional access point into the site. So the subject properties are located adjacent to E-470 within an area that is developed for light industrial uses with future plans for commercial and/or multifamily residential located to the north. The subject property was developed in 2008 within unincorporated Douglas County as a light industrial center. After the property was annexed and zoned in 2015, the town processed several zoning changes that restricted several commercial and light industrial uses on the property. These restrictions applied to the modified light industrial zoning. The proposed rezoning to a planned development will allow the properties to continue to be used for light industrial uses as was originally intended during annexation. The proposed light industrial planned development zoning will maintain the light industrial nature of the property as well as provide an orderly transition of uses from E-470 to the residential uses to the north. The town's master plan identifies the Corporate Park at Stonegate property as E-470 mixed use. The E-470 mixed use areas characterize as a place where residents should be able to walk and bike to services through a mix of land uses, public amenities, and a multimodal transportation system. The requested zoning is consistent with the goals and strategies of the master plan as the revised zoning will help allow adequate opportunities for expansion of the town's economic base. It will provide a transition and buffer land uses from E-470, and it will support new and existing businesses by allowing for the existing uses to continue and providing opportunities for similar light industrial uses to be drawn to this development. So staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability, and the project satisfies the nine criteria required within the Land Development Ordinance to rezone the property. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Corporate Park at Stonegate rezoning. This concludes the staff presentation. The applicant is here tonight and does have a presentation for you, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Stacy. I might also remind my fellow commissioners that my wife does work in the same office spaces as Mr. Kessler, the applicant. They don't work on these projects together. They just work in the same office suite.
See, no problem.
Okay.
No problem.
All right. Questions for Stacy?
Was that extension of Parker House Road actually built? It's not represented in the photograph provided.
Right. So this is the newest aerial we have, and you can't see it yet, but the extension said the applicant was required to construct the south half of Parker House Road to Lansleaf Street, which is that street that goes north-south up to Cottonwood Drive. So Parker House Road was extended. It was constructed from where it deadened all the way over to where it would eventually turn and go.
And is Lansleaf also existing currently?
Lansleaf does not exist currently. Lansleaf will be constructed when the north properties are developed.
And there was a concern, fire life safety had a concern regarding that extension was, so has that concern been taken care of?
So one of the things, so in 2015, a use was going into these, one of the buildings here, that required a secondary access. So the town approached the property owner in 2015 and asked them to annex into the Town of Parker. In order for that use to go in there, South Metro required a secondary access. So the secondary access required Parker House Road to be extended. That satisfied those uses. If additional uses came in where the occupancy load was higher than what's currently existing for light industrial, one of those could be an assembly use. If one of those were proposed, the applicant would be required to construct Lansleaf down off Cottonwood Drive to connect to Parker House Road to provide that additional access to the site.
And they're contractually obligated to do that?
They are not contractually obligated. It's not within like an annexation agreement or anything like that. Cottonwood Highlands Development, which is the property located to the north, they are contractually obligated, but if development within these sites occurred first and they needed that access, they would have to work with that property owner and figure out a way to get it done.
I had another question. It comes again from the PD, and the list of uses, it's such an interesting, diverse list of uses, which is what we're supposed to have in this area. But what I did notice is that a daycare center is a use by right on Page Three, and it's restricted as an accessory use on Page Four. And I wasn't sure about that. I also had a question regarding a heliport. When you have the airport issues going on, that that would be even on there as a use by special review? And finally, the warehouse and the storage. I thought we were done with those.
Right.
And so I'm concerned why that's even on the list.
Yes. So to answer your first one, the heliport, it is a use by special review, so it would have to go through the referral process. They would have to work with Centennial Airport if that was even considered, and Centennial Airport would have to grant some sort of permission for that to be located there. And that's why it's a use by special review, so that we could go through that process. The same thing with storage. So what we were trying to do with this zoning was, the town had approached the applicant to zone, and we told them when we approached them that we would keep the light industrial nature of the property consistent with what they had in unincorporated Douglas County. And so over time, as that has changed, we're adding some of these uses back in, but we don't want them to be used as permitted by right. We still want control over them. We want to look at them. We want to see how it's affecting the area. Does it meet our use by special review criteria? So that's why it's in the use by special review.
Is it being currently used as a mini warehouse, any of that? Are any of those uses currently being?
No. And we can ask the applicant when he gives his presentation, but I do not believe so.
And what's the deal with the daycare? That's just confusing to me, that we, it's a use by right on one page and it's an accessory use on the second page.
Yes, that's something that we may need to clean up before, because we missed that.
Okay. That's it. That's all I had.
Further questions for Stacy?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. Does the applicant want to step forward and make the presentation, please? State your name and address for the record.
Trying to not stab myself in my pen here. Zach Kessler, Wood Spear Properties, 5619 DTC Parkway, Greenwood Village, 80111. I'm here on behalf of the property owner applicant, or the controlling owner, portion of the ownership group here. So we're locally owned privately held capital, and we own and operate flex industrial facilities like this in several markets in the United States. So first of all, I want to thank you for your time tonight. This has been a good one. I think you've had some fun stuff up here. This one hopefully is pretty vanilla. To answer one of the questions, first and foremost, no, we don't have any warehouse use here. I'll get to that in a second. And I think, at least in my reading of the way we had the two different uses for daycare facilities, was a little bit of a nuance of how we borrowed a little bit from Douglas County, because that one's limited to childcare facilities for employees, like a daycare inside of a corporate thing versus, you know, you're holding yourself out to the public as a daycare facility. So holding yourself out to the public as a daycare facility is used by right. We may not need it for employees, but when, that was where, how we were approaching the distinction between those two things as the applicant.
It's the lack of the six-foot fence. There's no play area for your kiddos in the accessory use. So that's where the big dichotomy comes, that becomes an issue. If you're going to do it, you know, you could try to cut corners and not give the kids somewhere to play outside. So I'd just like to see that addressed as a, you know, cleanup issue.
Sorry. That's all right.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. I don't mind. I'd rather get that stuff answered while I'm thinking about it than forget. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So Stacy already showed the site context, and for some reason, I don't know how I got an aerial, actually shows what we did build, so. But next slide. So we did build that on an adjacent property owner's land, and so we know the Cottonwood Highlands ownership. We were able to work with them before. That wasn't our property, the extension that we did, dedicated that over to the town. So we purchased this property, assembled the two lots from the Stonegate Master Development, and constructed this building in 2008. It's 82, 295, rentable square feet across two different buildings. They're high-quality, concrete, tilt-up, high image. I'm sure you've all seen them driving around. These are really nice buildings, and they were designed, as you can tell with the different clear heights, to be particularly flexible in terms of what gets done in these buildings. We also built them with excess parking compared to other industrial uses. We have over a three-per-thousand parking ratio here to accommodate, again, flexibility in terms of the uses of the site. So there's currently six tenants with more than 200 employees that are happy to be employees of the Town of Parker. We have the General Services Administration, Stanley Steamer Essentials, and E-Boat is a home automation company. I2 Construction is a tenant-finish specialist construction company, general contractor. Parker Power Sports and Solar City. The uses listed above are the kind of general overall uses. I won't repeat all of those, but again, no mini storage. So Stacy really keyed on this in her presentation, so I won't repeat it, but we're trying, a big thing for us was these changes that got caught up in modified light industrial kind of defeated the purpose of the key features of the design of this property, making it less attractive to prospective future tenants, and it kind of defeated the reason why we invested in some buildings being 18 feet clear and some being 24, and why we overparked it, and things like that. So that's why we approached the town about seeking this rezoning. We think it's important, given the location of these buildings, in between Jordan and Chambers and right off E-470, that over time, as more of those homes fill in, that there might be a different character in terms of what uses may be interested in terms of being tenants here, and so we're trying to get out ahead of that rather than having a situation where we have a vacancy, we have an interested tenant, and we can't make it work. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Kessler?
No.
None. As long as you promise no more storage.
They can't afford us.
All right.
I think you put up a really nice-looking facility when you put it up, and when it first went up, I was somewhat concerned because of the amount of time it took you to rent it out.
So were we.
And I'm sure you were, because you had a lot of money sitting there, but today, when you go by, it's a very attractive commercial facility, and your list of tenants is very impressive for people driving down 470. It looks more attractive than daycare.
Oh, we certainly appreciate it. We're lucky to have very patient capital partners. This one was a long haul, so as you can tell, that's why we were very concerned about the number of uses here, because there was a period of time where this needed anything it could get in terms of being able to attract tenants, and so hopefully, we'll be able to continue to keep it full, and appreciate your comment about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate the, oh, I'm sorry. Gary, I'm ahead of myself.
Yes. As this is a public hearing, we will open it to public comment about this particular matter before us. If you have a public comment, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Do we need further information from staff or applicant?
No.
No.
No, thank you.
All right. We will close the public hearing at 7:47. Planning Commission discussion.
Now can I go?
Yeah.
I appreciate the look of the building. I think it fits in well, kind of as a buffer between the residential areas and 470. And again, those are sometimes hard to fill, so having such a nice-looking building between, in that buffer zone, is pretty nice. So I support the project.
I look at the developer's concept of being ahead of the curve. As more upscale residential moves into the north there, this will give them the opportunity to adjust and to fill the need of whatever the neighborhood is desiring, so I'm very much in favor of the rezoning.
I support the rezoning. I think that staff has done a very good job of working with the applicant to make sure that they can keep the building full and that, and still, you know, take care of the concerns that the residents of Parker have regarding this type of development.
I support you.
Good job, Stacy.
Yeah, I think the additional light rail uses by rezoning will be a benefit to that area and keep it, and buildings in that area looking good, and I'll be supporting it.
So I agree. I believe that the listing of potential uses keeps it open for the future, and I think that's a great thing for the community as it's starting to develop out in that area, so I'll be in support.
Once again, I certainly concur with the rest of the commission, and we'll be supporting it as well. Do we have a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend a Town Council approve the rezoning.
I-
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by John, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the rezoning. All those in favor signify by yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
We don't get to have Stacy again?
No.
No, no, she gets the rest of the night off. All right, next we have a public hearing. Lot 1 tracks 8 and 9 Blair Industrial Center, tracks 7, 8, and 9 First Amendment, used by special review, planning case number Z16024. We will open the public hearing at 7:50.
Okay, good evening, good evening Chairman Poole and good evening Planning Commissioners. So speaking of storage, Eliana, this is what we're going to hear tonight, so. This is a use by special review request to allow for the continuation of an existing outdoor storage use. The applicant Steve Ceriza from Gen Engineering, as well as the property owner Carl Ellis, are present this evening to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. This property has been posted and legal notice per the town's land development ordinance. So this parcel is located at 10295 Progress Way within the town's Light Industrial Zone District and Light Industrial Master Plan Character Area. The uses surrounding this parcel include outdoor storage to the north, professional offices to the east, flex industrial space to the south, and auto repair to the west. The property owner operates a vehicle towing business and uses the south half of the property for the, for the temporary storage of tow vehicles and the north half of the property for the storage of construction-related materials and equipment. There are no buildings or structures located on-site and no buildings or structures are approved with this use by special review. This site is not accessible to the public and the outdoor storage yard is enclosed on all sides by a secured six-foot-high slatted chain-link fence. So a little bit of a background to establish some context with this. In February of 2016, the Town of Parker Council approved an ordinance that prohibited storage as a primary land use in Parker. That ordinance contained a provision to allow existing storage uses within the Light Industrial Zone District to continue as long as a use by special review application was submitted to the town for consideration prior to September 7th of 2016. The applicant submitted both use by special review and site plan applications for staff's consideration by that date. The use by special review and the site plan consists of the applicant's responses to the use by special review criteria, as well as onsite, excuse me, onsite sediment basin for improving stormwater quality, designated temporary vehicle storage areas, drive aisles, as well as installing landscape improvements along Progress Way. The purpose of the site plan improvements is to satisfactory and meet the use by special review criteria and to allow the property owner to legally continue the outdoor storage use. The sediment basin is a temporary pond built on a construction site, oh, excuse me, next slide. So the site development plan, as mentioned, it designates access drives, temporary vehicle storage areas, that will occur on the south half of the property as denoted in red. It will have a sediment basin as denoted in purple on the southwest portion of the property and then contractor storage on the north half of the, north half of the property. The landscape plan along the east side of the property adjacent to Progress Way, they'll have evergreens that will screen the outdoor storage yard with shrubs, cobble mulch, and granite boulders to bring the streetscape landscaping into consistency with the surrounding street landscape, landscaping out there. So the site is accessed by two points off of Progress Way, as shown up here. And it is secured again by a six-foot-high fence and cannot be accessed by any members of the public. So the 20-foot-wide drive-out loop with turnarounds is proposed on the site to allow vehicular and emergency access and the property owner does not desire to increase the intensity of the uses that are on here from what already exists. It estimates that the site will generate up to 16 vehicle trips per day for both temporary vehicle storage and construction materials. So staff has analyzed the response to the use by special review, along with the proposed site and landscape plan, and has determined that all nine use by special review criteria have been met. That analysis is provided in the report. And staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend that the town council approve the use by special review request with the seven conditions as outlined in staff's report. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from Planning Commission. Thank you.
Ryan, did we see something similar to this within the last couple of years?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, it came up during the storage.
This has come up before and at that time?
Yes.
Clarify for me, what did we decide to do?
For what, and specifically, John, I'm sorry?
When it came up before, what was our recommendation at that time? My mind doesn't go back that well.
Bryce, do you want to?
Yeah, so, so this was not considered as a use by special review, but it did come up as part of the storage ordinance. And as part of that process, they were allowed until that September 7th, 2016 deadline to apply. And so they did that and it's just taken a while to come through the process and so you're seeing it again now in an official capacity, looking at this particular request.
Okay, and then, you know, if approved, what do we have for reclamation of the grounds? When you're towing, I assume, vehicles that have been damaged and could be leaking chemicals into the ground, what are we doing to protect from that?
Sure. So just a little kind of background on this, from what I've learned throughout this, the process of getting it to this point. So the majority, when, when vehicles get into accidents, the majority of the fluids that are spilled are actually spilled on-site. So when they're brought to the site, not many fluids are left to kind of go into the ground, so. But we require that the applicant provide a spill manual and mitigation plan for this and that, that was in your packets, provided to you in your packets.
I just have trouble understanding it because I'm not that technical on it and I am concerned with that particular issue. Seems how I had a car that wasn't out of its liquid go to that area.
Sure, so the, the materials in spill manual identifies, you know, the employees on a daily basis will check vehicles to make sure that they are not leaking and when they are leaking, there are various methods to use materials such as sawdust and clay to absorb the fuels that would leak onto the ground. And, and that, that spill mitigation manual is, is part of the requirements that we are asking the applicant to comply with, with this, so.
And that was reviewed by Cherry Creek, right?
It was reviewed by the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority, yeah, as well as Tri-Kinney Health.
Okay.
So we also have a stormwater team. So if it's determined that there are leaks and items getting into the stormwater, they will be approached and there is the option that the use by special review can be revoked if there's an issue, if, if there are leaks.
And is there a mitigation plan enforced to protect if, if there are leaks?
So our stormwater team has typical best practices for mitigation. I don't know enough about them.
I don't either, that's why I like to ask.
And so it's a fair question, but we do have folks on staff that are knowledgeable.
Okay, we have somebody smarter than both of us?
Yes.
Okay.
Put together.
If I, if I could add to what, if I could add, by the way, to what Bryce is saying, we asked that the property owner do a soils investigation a couple of years ago prior to purchasing the property and that, that soils investigation didn't reveal any contamination of the soils on-site, so that kind of fits in with, you know, vehicles, fluid spilling onto the scene of the accident rather than, you know, bringing it back to the tow yard, so. So, yeah, I just wanted to add that, thank you.
One other thing with this, when we originally looked at it, I don't believe there was going to be construction equipment. I think that was going to be all vehicle storage?
That is correct.
And now we're putting what type of construction equipment on the site?
So that, that was discovered late in the process, you are correct Commissioner Howe, by, by staff. The, the construction materials that will be on-site is construction materials, concrete forms, from what I, when I went and visited, concrete forms. You know, with the property owner could probably provide more insight on that if they would like to step forward.
Are you going to restrict the height of that to the six-foot fence?
Yes, we are.
Do I read this, do I read this correctly, that this is an annual review that will be happening, they have to get this reviewed annually for this use by special review? How does that work?
If, if there are issues that are brought to staff's attention, we do have the option that, there is a condition on there Commissioner Nelson, that we do have the option to revoke the use by special review if there are issues that are brought to our attention. For example, that mitigation measures are not taken, you know, vehicles are being parked on the street, construction materials are being stacked above the fence. We have that option in there to, to review that on an annual basis.
That's your special condition number seven, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Additional questions for Ryan?
Nope.
Does the applicant have a presentation, Ryan?
No presentation, I would like to address.
Well, could, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Steve Ceriza, I'm with Gen Engineering, 5690 Webster Street, Arvada, Colorado. I wanted to address some of the concerns because those are the same concerns that we had when we started this project a number of years ago. 22 years as a firefighter, I've seen a lot of accidents and I've seen a lot of projects go bad because of poor planning. So this is near and dear to my heart, all the questions that the chair, or the commission is asking are legitimate questions. So we, we took this as a two-pronged approach. We wanted to protect the site and the adjacent neighbors and the downstream users from possible contamination in two ways. One is not bringing contaminants to the site. That's again, supported by documentation based on the soil conditions with no mitigation plan in place at all for the last 23 years. Second, during the spill, in the spill mitigation plan, we're not only going to use pans and plates and clays and absorbents to mitigate those before they get to the ground, but if they were to get to the ground, then we have the sediment basin that would actually collect that. The, the principle would be is if all processes failed, we would still have another process to stop the, you know, the fluids to get off-site. Regardless, if all that happened, the spiller, in this case the owner, would still be responsible for all the cleanup, regardless how far. So, these are great questions and I appreciate your concern about the, the environment and what we're doing. The construction equipment itself is mostly forms and product that was being installed for homes that are being built in Parker and the surrounding areas. It's not construction equipment or construction material that would be, you know, contaminated or have that, but again, that's the principle of having that sediment basin, if it was, if it had concrete dust on it, it rained, had, you know, a significant water, amount of water come down off the, off the ground, it would go into the pond, protect it and we can get that, you know, that pond cleaned out periodically and that is also outlined in the Civil Prevention Manual.
What's the size of the vehicles that'd be entering in to the area in order to move the construction material back and forth?
There'd be 10 or 15-ton cabin chassis-type double-axle tandem axle semis that would load forms onto that or pieces of, you know, like window wells, et cetera.
Will those rigs be stored there overnight or over weekend?
Not to my knowledge, sir. They, they store them across the street at their facility.
At their current facility.
Correct.
Familiar with their trucks.
And what's the timeline for doing the landscape improvements?
Would be immediately, immediate upon construction of the, or approval of the, of the project, the use by special review and, and, you know, immediately after the city, city council approves it.
Well, good, that's a hot mess over there, so it'll look nice.
All right, any additional questions?
Is the site, do you have just road base on it or is it actually concrete?
It's just, it's just road base, ma'am.
Okay. But everything in and out is asphalt, correct?
Off the, off the road, there's an apron and then it turns into road base. And again, that's, that's, believe it or not, that's by design. We can clean that site up if we had a leak, if we had, you know, a truck that was leaking hydraulic fluid or gasoline or diesel, we could dig that out of the ground because it would, it would contain itself, you know, in that dirt where is if we had it concrete or asphalt, it immediately runs off and we have a small problem that just turned into a very large problem. You know, again, as a 22-year fire veteran, we used to go out every time there was a leak and we'd spray 5,000 gallons of water to clean up a gasoline leak and then we realized we spread this gasoline leak over a square mile rather than just cleaning up the mess that, you know, was probably the size of this desk.
Further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions for staff?
No.
All right, as this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. If you have a comment on this matter before us, please step forward to the microphone. State your name and address for the record.
My name's Rick Vaughn. I operate a business adjacent to this property at 10311 South Progress Way. I wanted to speak tonight about the, the current state of the property. The 10 feet to the, the furthest 10 feet on the south side of the property, for the last four and a half years we've been there, has never been maintained. There's three-to-four-foot-high weeds and we've, we've witnessed dumping from, what I understand to be the property owner, of dirt and landscaping materials. We've witnessed car fires that have been there, so to speak to the liquids from vehicles. There are issues there that's, that go beyond just, you know, metal being stored there in the form of damaged cars, so. I, I have an issue and what I would request is for a recommendation for the town council, I think it would just, basic consideration would be that they bring it up to, into compliance with current codes, especially when it has to do with noxious weeds. We also have problems with other businesses parking their vehicles on that property, on the south side of the property, on the outside of their fence. I have been told by those businesses that they have permission of the landowner to park there. The problem is, is that where their property ends is dirt and where the property we lease begins is an alleyway or paved. And what's happening is those vehicles are parking on the alleyway, obstructing access to our business. And like I said, we've been told that they've been given permission to park there, but they're not parking on their land, they're parking on an alleyway which is actually owned by our landlord, as I understand it. And so my question, my, my input would be that these considerations, especially since you're talking about landscaping, the front of their property on Progress, they also need to do something about the stretch of 10 feet on the south side of the property, which has been neglected for years.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comment? With that, we will close the public comment. Now you can come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, commissioners. Just to address those concerns, I confided with the property owner and to his understanding, his property line is the fence line on the south side. And if there's any maintenance that would be necessary, that would be of course taken care of as part of this use by special review.
To the comments of the last person who was up here, if his property stops at the fence line, would the town then be, or Ryan, maybe you can answer this, would the town then be in a position if notified by another owner that there's vehicles parked there to just have them towed away at owner expense? Because if there are vehicles being parked outside of this fence and they're saying that they've been given permission?
Right.
Should we just not tow them away? That, that might cure a big problem.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we were, we were talking about the, the private street on the south side.
On the south side, yes, sir. Where there's a fence and, and we were just, a gentleman just stated that there were vehicles being parked on the outside of that fence.
I think somebody needs to define what, who that street belongs to and get that clarified because from code standpoint, wouldn't code enforcement go out and?
That's correct, yeah. Code, code enforcement would go out, with regard With regards to the weeds on the south side of the property, I mean, we could address that with Neighborhood Services. We'd be happy to do that. But with regards to the parking on the south side of the property, not on the property, but off it, in the alleyway, it's a private property owner that would have to be resolved. Like, the town would not tow those vehicles.
Because that's a private road?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So, then, we had some, I mean...
Can the property owner have the cars towed, if they're parked on his property?
Yes, yes.
The drawing that you have for the landscaping shows the fence, you know, if you look on the south side, there's, the fence is there, and then you've got your cobblestone, what do you call these?
Rock cobbles.
Remove weeds and dirt piles, install six-inch gray cobblestone, two-to-six-inch gray cobblestone. So, that would actually be outside of the fence line.
If you notice on the plans, there's an approximate boundary on there. So, it might be, typically, if you don't install a fence right on the property line, there'd be a little bit of buffer. But again, I don't...
I think, what I'm saying is, I think that's the area that the public comment was regarding.
Absolutely.
And it looks like it's been addressed in this plan, so that, not the cars being there, but the presence of weeds and dirt piles and things are specifically addressed in the landscape plan. Because you're right, it's a hot mess right now.
Yeah.
And it, you know, this should clean that up quite a bit, but then it would be incumbent upon the landowner south of that fence to call for towing and to post for towing on their private property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions for the applicant or Ryan?
The owner would like to talk to just the council, if it please.
Sure. State your name and address for the record, please.
Carl Ellis, 6485 North Pinewood Drive, Parker, 80134.
Thank you.
Two things. The, whoever parks their cars there is, I've never given anybody permission to park their cars. So, that's one thing.
Okay.
Two things. I don't own a landscape business, so I'm not dumping any dirt or anything in there. So, the gentleman might be misled or listening to people. That's very untrue. Thirdly, about twice a year, we have been contacted by the Town of Parker, I think, and they've gone by, and I've actually had to pay a landscaper to cut those weeds down. So, for someone to say that it hadn't been done in four years, maybe he hasn't been paying attention. And, but that, the cars on that side of the road is not my responsibility to have them towed. We don't do private property removals, and I'm not going to start now. So, whoever parks on that side of the road, the law is, it has to stay in the same spot for 72 hours before you can tow it off. That is the law. So, if a car's not there for 72 hours, there's nothing you can do about it.
Thanks, sir.
That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Further question?
Ryan, I have a question. When you made the site trip, did you observe any of the things that were pointed out by the public?
Yeah, I made several trips over the last year or so, year or two, to the site. There are kind of random vehicles in those here. I'm going to bring it up. In the lands that are shown now, Eliana, Commissioner Burke, as landscape bumpouts, I've seen vehicles parked in there. The good thing about this landscape plan is that there's granite boulders proposed around there, so no vehicles are allowed to go in there anymore. But, yeah, we did ask the property owner to take the, excuse me, the construction materials below the fence within the last year as well, so, yes.
Chair, if I may. Chair.
Bryce.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm getting voices.
He wasn't sure where the voices were.
Hearing voices.
Yeah, that's what happens.
So, a couple of things to bring to the commission's attention. So, there are two conditions in here that begin to address some of those concerns. One is number three, which says the property owner must not allow the vehicle parking, or the parking vehicles temporarily otherwise outside the fence enclosure on Progress Way or any other of the surrounding streets or access drives. So, if it's on the applicant's property, there's a condition that says he won't be permitting that. The second is number six, where the property owner must irrigate and maintain the landscaping in accordance with the approved site plan, which goes to the commissioner's comment about rock on the side, on the south side. So, there are two conditions in there that I think move towards addressing those concerns.
I have one other question with regards to parking, because people park wherever they want without asking permission. So, is, can you put no parking signs along here? And, I mean, not that people will abide by them, but at least there's something that says no parking, and you've got the landscape and all that other stuff to keep folks who appear to be parking there with or without permission out of there?
Yes, you, the property owner would be able to do that, just like as you see in, you know, shopping centers, like, you know, parking for such-and-such business. So, the property owner can do that.
And can I ask the applicant if they would be willing to do that? I mean, if that helps some of these issues as one of the conditions?
Sir, you could certainly add a condition to this if you so choose.
So, Chair, the other suggestion I might add, rather than adding a condition, is staff can take that as input, and we are in the process of reviewing a site plan, so that could be a requirement of the site plan as well.
Yeah, I think that...
Will that come back to us again, or will that be done internally, Bryce?
So, that would be administrative.
I'd like to see it added, where they would put clear signs that says you can't park there.
On the site plan?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And where it says, it doesn't matter if you're there for however long, you're just, you're not allowed to park there.
We could, we could do that by amending the condition number three, by adding perhaps a phrase that says on any of the surrounding streets or access drives and providing signage as appropriate.
I would rather not change the motion.
Okay.
I think if it can be done in the site plan process.
Okay.
Yeah, it can be. Okay. I'm amenable to that.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'm all right with that.
That works for me. I trust staff.
Any further questions? All right, we will close the public hearing at 8:17. Commissioner, discretion.
As long as they do what they're supposed to do, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I think as long as the seven conditions are met, followed, and monitored, I don't see any reason why we can't continue the outdoor storage use, and I'll be for it.
So, my understanding is that this property was used for this purpose for a very long time, and it was leased by the person who runs the business, and they purchased it just in time for us to change the rules on them. So, I appreciate the difficulty that they, as owners of the property, have probably gone through in trying to make sure that they can maintain a business where they finally managed to buy the property rather than lease it. It appears to me that they are doing due diligence and meeting the requirements that have been set out by staff and have worked well with staff, and I thank them for that, and I would support this.
I support the project where it's located, kind of, and that is an industrial area. I would like to see the applicant, you know, the recommendations, and just be cognizant of the issues of the surrounding business owners, but I do support the ongoing storage.
I support the project as well. Nothing to add. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the use by special review request to follow for the continuation of an existing non-conforming outdoor storage use, subject to the seven conditions contained in the staff's report.
I second.
It's been moved by Eliana, seconded by Ruth Ann. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the use by special review request to allow for the continuation of existing non-conforming outdoor storage use, subject to the seven conditions outlined in the staff's report. Signify your approval by yes.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Staff items.
Yes, sir. Two items. First, I don't have my notes, did want Planning Commission to be aware that at the June 28th meeting, there'll be a study session after the meeting, it'll be a short meeting with my main street update. The second is that wanted Planning Commission to be aware that the Town Council will be considering a resolution regarding the appointment and reappointment of members of the commission at their June 18th meeting, for those that, for those positions that are either vacant or those that are expiring at the end of June. Thanks.
One last thing for me. I am on the committee that's looking at the Long Range Arts and Cultural Plan, and there's a survey out there now on, what is that called? My Town, Bryce, the town's website, the...
Let's Talk Parker.
Let's Talk Parker. I would encourage you and encourage your neighbors. It's good feedback. We're trying to develop a long-range plan for the cultural arts facilities and programming for the town, and just encourage you to take that. Anything else for the group? And we will adjourn at 8:21.
Thank you.
Thank you.